I pray that your wisdom will be great today, or I pray that we exercise grace, you would exercise mercy, or we would exercise the wisdom that you give to us. But thank you for the city council members, thank you for our mayor, thank you for our city attorney, or I just pray that your hand wasn't being on, and all those that are here, all those who are watching, whether the decisions are made, that you would be honored and glorified to all that happens here tonight. In Jesus' name, okay? Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, Mr. Mayor.
Please face the flag. I play the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Council members, you have the agenda before you for this regular meeting of the city council for July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Are there any additions or deletions to be made to the agenda? Here it is, I move to make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion, I've heard second by Dr. Robinson, I'll favor say aye. Any opposed, say aye. The agenda is about to improve. Council members, you've also been given a copy of the minutes of our regular meeting of the city council held on July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Are there any changes or additions to be made to the minutes that you have received? Here it is, none of those minutes stand approved. We have no recognitions from the mayor's line, and we do have one council recognition. It says, "A presentation recognizing Mr. Billy McNally, in honor of the McNally family legacy." Mr. Clayne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't see, is Mr. McNally, he is here, okay. We are talking about recognizing a family that goes back to sixteen ninety-three, when literally they were, uh, uh, were literally captured and brought over to the United States at that time, what we now know as the United States. Jack McNally was born and came over in eighteen forty-eight. Families did many things to help in the Huntsville, North Alabama area. They helped to build Rutherford Dam, placed gravel on streets in West Huntsville, and did things related to the, um, try to read my writing here. They have the distinction of being among the very first marriages that took place here in the new Madison County, Alabama, in the year eighteen nineteen. So, a lot of things were out there for the family history. And at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to present this certificate to Mr. Bill McNally.
Thank you. Mr. Clayne, do you want the microphone?
That's okay, I think we're. Hey, Bill, can you just give that to you, put your hand there? And we just want you to know, we think of you, we have a lot of respect for you, your family, and we appreciate folks like you to make our community greater.
I'd give it back.
Thank you, Mr. Clayne, let the record reflect to Mr. Keith who's joining us. We have one presentation tonight, item seven A, is a presentation from downtown Hunsville. Mr. Hood.
Thanks for having me up here tonight. Here to kind of give an overview a little bit about the downtown Hunsville Inc. and our mission and how we have served the citizens of Hunsville in twenty twenty-three.
Rob, would you identify yourself real quick for the record?
Yes, Bravo, President CEO of Downtown.
Thank you.
So, downtown Hunsville Inc., our mission is to create a vibrant, economically sustainable downtown. We are a five oh one C six nonprofit, member driven, similar to organizations like The Chamber. We have a five hundred thousand dollar annual budget. Four hundred thousand dollars of that budget comes through membership dues, sponsorships, grants, and then the remaining fifth comes through impergration from the city. Um, we focus on four major pillars of work to kind of work toward our mission. We focus on strengthening the economic or the urban environment. Those are place making, uh, in a place making projects and events to help give downtown personality, authenticity, and also appeal. We work as development consultants. We help work with developers on providing them with data and studies and reports to attract and shape the different projects that you're seeing in downtown. We also do a lot of downtown advocacy and public policy. We serve as a liaison between downtown stakeholders, city departments, HPE. And we also work to ensure downtown remains the best place for stakeholders to live, work, and play. Lastly, we do a lot of marketing and public relations. Leveraging our vast network of near the ninety thousand social media followers, our three major social media platforms, we also have a robust newsletter subscription or newsletter base of subscribers where we work to inform citizens about downtown issues, upcoming events, and identify them with local businesses. Um, to really understand our impact, I think it's helpful to kind of set the stage for how downtown performed in twenty twenty-three. Relying on place AI, which is a tool that tracks foot traffic movements. We had nearly, uh, or we had over fifteen million annual visitors across one point eight million unique visits. That was a three percent year-over-year increase from twenty twenty-two and a five point two percent year-over-year decrease from twenty twenty-one. Our most visited days downtown were Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, when we had the Alabama High School Athletic Association volleyball championships at the BDC. We also, on December eighth, we had pencil trail and big spring jingle. Both of those have NCAHI played a role in bringing and connecting people with them that we said downtown had to offer. As you can see, the mantra of my profession is that downtown is for everyone. And if you look at the zip codes where our visitors are coming from, you'll see that that is reflected here in Huntsville. Just about every, these are our top six zip codes that frequent downtown. And you'll see just about every council district, if not every council district is represented here, including the city of Madison. To better understand how, you know, we affect and we benefit downtown, we'll dive into some of the DHI events from twenty twenty-three. Last year, we had over six food truck rallies that averaged about four, uh, forty-five hundred attendees per event. We had about, or we had six art walks that provided two hundred opportunities for local artists and makers to bring their product to market. Those averaged about twenty-five hundred attendees per event. We had four movies in the park averaging twelve hundred attendees per show. It's also important to note that all of the vendors, whether it's food trucks, art walk, um, participants, or the vendors that we have for movies at the park, their license, uh, they have city council business licenses, so that contributes to our tax base. Um, pencil trail last year also accounted for a hundred and thirty-five thousand folks across thirty-five nights, including the Black Friday market that kicked off the pencil trail season, um, which were over eleven hundred people on Black Friday to downtown. This was a forty-seven percent increase from twenty twenty-two. We also launched Rocker, not Rocket City, which was a partnership between DHI and Art Museum to create synergy, or create synergies between skating in the park and the pencil trail. All of those go to benefit the citizens of Hunsville visitors. Most importantly, all these events are free of charge, open to all ages. These are the zip codes that are represented at some of the DHI core events in last year. You'll see every single one of these events attracts a different zip code, different demographic, and they all kind of cater to different audiences. DHI also relies heavily on partnerships. We don't do any of our events on our own. We rely heavily on partners to make sure that the citizens are getting the best quality from our events and our place making projects. These are just a few of the groups that we work with, work with over the past two years to bring a variety of different events to downtown. We've also worked with a couple of these groups to make sure when larger events are coming to Huntsville, we're able to get those folks who are visiting private town coming through downtown establishments and supporting our collection of downtown establishments along the way. Of course, our biggest partner is the city of Huntsville. Without the support of the council, the mayor's office, Parks, Government, just about every city department, um, we would not be as effective at our job as we have been. So we can send our gratitude and thank you for your support. And if there, uh, we have to answer any questions, so that's kind of a quick overview of the organization impact we have had over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Rob. Do you have any questions? Dr. Robinson?
I hear people sometimes talk about the law is wanting to downtown and it should be going into the neighbors or whatever. You've just reminded us that downtown belongs to everybody. And we come here to do business at courts or get licenses or do business with the city or with the county, uh, but then we also come here to play, we come here to eat, we come here to see shows, and I love your data on zip codes. In fact, could I possibly get a copy of this presentation? I think we've all.
Absolutely, I can, I've got a copy of it.
Because this, this is, this is something important to share with everybody. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm just, uh, Dr. Robinson, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the District Five person just appointed clarification, um, a lot of the Madison, you've said city of Madison, um, a lot of those folks, I don't know what it is, that had a breakdown, but a lot of those folks with Madison addresses like myself are actually city of Huntsville.
Yeah.
And I know it's a pain to tease it out, and I'm not asking you to do that, but I just want to plug in for those of us that have city of Madison.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Keith?
Yeah, one, thank you for the presentation. We've had a couple of meetings, and I guess I could just bring this up briefly without diving into it. I do think that the breakdown of zip codes, very important to know that everybody uses downtown. One of the things that have been discussed, and I'm just, you know, you can mention your governmental board that are very intelligent, is will you, do you believe in the next four or five years of the conversation between residential, commercial use of downtown? Who's living downtown versus who's working downtown? What are your perspectives on just considering those things in the next four or five years?
Well, I think it's important that we have the diversity of folks living downtown, diversity across, you know, races, across income levels, you name it. I think, um, you know, are the issues that downtown's for everyone, and for truly to be for everyone, we have to represent, um, we have to have a combination of folks living downtown across all sorts of income levels. So I would like to see us do, I mean, develop low-income workforce housing, and I think with the Milk Creek Project, we're doing that. And I know that there are other issues that will hurt, um, so I definitely would like to continue to see that come fruition.
Perfectly stated. And then the last two cents was the conversation we had about, um, you know, what's the difference in your perspective of like, public infrastructure use, sky bridges and such, versus like intentional recreational, which is law and such? Do you think downtown is in a place to reconsider public or private, you know, what do you think on that?
Yeah, I think we are becoming a city that is, now we see a lot of growth in our residential market downtown. Um, I think as a result, we, our infrastructure is changing from being something that is being used for recreational purposes to being a legitimate transportation option. We manage the Blue Bike program. One of the things that we're looking at doing is how can we convert that from a recreational program to a transportation program? To be sure that stations are in the right locations, so people can go from their apartment to publics, to the warehouse, to hospital, you name it. So I think that's something that as downtown continues to grow, residential will see the infrastructure have to change to, you know, support multimode transportation, like foot traffic, bike traffic, people.
Rob, you're perfectly stated. And council members, I do not prefer this, but as we stated in our meeting, do you see the potential, because when I went to DC another places, I'm not electric scooters before one of my colleagues says something. Electric bikes, and our mayor loves to ride in on them. Have you seen the potential of that being a usage of transportation?
I think if we want to continue to grow, um, you know, the bike share program, have a little system for electric bikes that, you know, live in a dock station, absolutely have a place, I think their need is, we have some challenging photography. Um, it'd be a really big challenge to ride a bike from downtown to UAH currently, but if you had a pedal assist bike, that would make it a lot easier. And, you know, having those as a part of the dock system would make sure bikes are, you know, left and organized and maintained better.
And if done correctly, constantly working with Ms. Rich and her department, essentially this transportation could be subsidized for those who work and can't maybe catch the bus at a certain time to get back and use that electric bike to enable us to stay nice.
Yeah, so one of the things we've looked at, and we've implemented with Blue Bike programs, right, or a few years ago, it was a, uh, you had a per-use fee for any one of those bikes. We've had an hour membership, um, that's thirty, thirty dollar annual membership. That gets you unlimited rides for thirty dollars a year, and that really brings down the cost of making that a viable transportation option. So that would be something that we would definitely want to promote as we continue to grow that system.
Thank you, man. You're a good speaker. Thank you so much.
Well, I just wanted to convey you a great job. I know you had a little bit of one downtown, uh, before you came on. I think you really take it all, you really run with it. Walk around downtown a lot, uh, you've got coffee shops, you've got restaurants, bicycle, you're interested about the movies, uh, festival of lights tomorrow night, uh, all sorts of things that you're doing. These are baby friendly, uh, but at the same time, uh, they're bringing a lot of people downtown. And I remember not too long ago, downtown was almost like a ghost town. You'd come out of the council meetings and basically downtown is deserted, but now there's a lot of great things going on. And, uh, you know, we can always use another good restaurant or two, buy the place and put them, but, uh, again, I think there's great things that have taken place, and I just want to say, thanks and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, and everybody say what I want to say. So, thanks, keep up the good work, thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you.
We have no matters without civil representatives, but we do have a few public hearings to be held. Nine A is a public hearing on the rezoning of five point one six acres of land lying on the west side of Pulaski Pike and north of Carter's Road, from Residence One District to Industrial Park District, in consideration of the ordinance pertaining to the same. Chris Newtons?
Pitying Council President and Council members, Thomas Meany has rendered planning on services. This first, I'd like to do, uh, petition for the rezoning of five point sixteen acres west side of Pulaski Pike, north of Carter's Road. Residence One District to Industrial Park District. The petition is also offering plaque restrictions. The restrictions are in the statement of a minimum of a hundred foot wide buffer of spring planting shall be maintained along the boundaries of property of building properties, um, Zone Residence One District, and another plaque restriction, which would attach to a minimum of seventy-five foot wide, uh, area along the western and southern boundary of the property shall be maintained as an unbilled area.
Thank you, Mr. Newtons. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion to approve. Outside, uh, we got, I see Hannah, Ms. Johnson, I'm sure, I'm sorry. Or yours?
Thank you. Uh, Julie Johnson, I want to discover the right of Huntsville. What is the meaning of that entire property is undiluted? Is that correct? Do you believe they cover the trees? If that's so, what do you have to do about the habitat? When are we going to start picking up concerning places like that instead of picking industrial parks on? That's, this is a outland, but it has on the south. Huge wildlife area here. Not concerned about conservation, that would probably see from the south. It's depressing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Move by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Clayne. Any discussion with the council members? All favors say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Robinson. I forgot to remember the whole place.
So this is, there's, there's nothing around that has, has been developed, but the plan is to turn, it's connecting to which laws are applied.
So this would connect to a portion of property that's looking on industrial park. Uh, all of the parcels are not depicted on this particular area. What you are aware of, what you should be aware of is that, um, from the frontage of Pulaski Pike property back to the rear of this property is one single property in itself. So majority of the property was owned industrial park, and there's a small section that was seeking, seeking to be rezoned. Uh, previously, the petitioner had wanted to rezon, but again, there was some conversations around, uh, the adjacent property owners that were concerned about the areas being maintained as residential and wanting to be protected from building, uh, certain industrial buildings. So the petitioner therefore put forward the plaque restrictions, uh, which were similar to plaque restrictions that you saw, uh, to the southern property, which has recently been developed by Freedom Tech.
And regarding Ms. Jones's questions, whenever developer, um, engage, presents a point to develop, there's always an environmental impact study. Is that correct?
Well, no, there is not always an environmental impact study, there are environmental assessments done, so that we get an understanding of what is out there, uh, from the overall environment. Uh, in the proportion of conservation, there are other sections that we do concern through the, uh, Land Trust, uh, but there are actions that we hope to take through our sustainability committee to further advance that, those conversations as well.
We are looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You can, all favors say aye. Any opposed, say aye. The resolution passes, or the ordinance passes. Nine D is a public hearing on the rezoning of a hundred and fifty-five. I said, I always said, it's not like you said question, no. Nine D is a public hearing on the rezoning of a hundred and fifty-five point three three acres of land lying on the north of I five sixty-five, west side of Mooresville Road, from Commercial Industrial Park and Residence Two B Districts to Residence Two, Residence Two B and Highway Business C four districts, in consideration of the ordinance pertaining to the same. Mr. Newtons?
Councilman, this item is located north of Interstate five six five and west of Mooresville Road. Our property is mostly zoned commercial and industrial park, but also has some components that are Residence Two B and Residence Two. Uh, the petitioner is seeking to rezon the property to Residence Two, Residence Two B and Highway Business C four. Uh, so in this overall boundary, as you see, the northern sections in yellow will be rezoned from Commercial Industrial Park to Residence Two for a single-family residential development. Uh, to the south, you would see, uh, this other section also be rezoned to Residence Two as well. Additionally, the blue area will be rezoned for R two B and the orange will be rezoned for Highway Business C four. As, uh, through this component, they are seeking to develop a misuse development of residential and commercial, uh, in this report.
Thank you. Mr. Newtons, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I would ask, I was on the red, and I'm still. I only do I see a tree cover problem that, uh, this habitat is going to be lost, and I have yet to see anybody in here talking from the Sustainability Committee about any of this, so I don't know what they're doing. I also seem to see some armpit that's going to be turned into houses. Um, is anybody ever concerned about quarter grid and our food, will we build houses on all of our armpit? Just thought, thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? At this time, the public hearing is closed, but most of our, Dr. Robinson, sorry, my Mr. Mayor, any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Newtons, um, citizen brought up the, uh, the wooded area. It's my understanding, isn't this the project where they're going to have the reserve, the reserve, the nature thing?
Uh, there will be a substantial amount of property that will remain in its natural state as what you see significantly in this wooded area is already flood weight, uh, so you cannot build in that particular section, although part of the entire property, uh, the property is being rezoned for the commercial industrial use, uh, to the residential and uses that are being brought before you currently. Uh, this does not encompass a complete trail connection, uh, but there are future trail connections that are established in our overall greenway, as the plan, that may be considered in this, uh, development section, uh, lots don't create.
Thank you. So I, 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 I think that hopefully is sufficient to let you know that we are thinking about sustainability in this area, and there's a long-term plan that we'll be coming together to do a lot of the things that, that you are concerned about, and we are thinking of those things, and it may not be plain and bold for you to see, but we are taking that into consideration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good sir. Any others? All favors say aye. Any opposed, say aye. The ordinance passes. Nine C is a hearing will rezon the ninety-five point zero seven acres of land lying on the south side of Swancock Road and west of Rabbit Rabbit Lane, from Residence Two, Residence Two B Districts to Plan Development, Highway District, L Y forty-five and fifty-six, in consideration of the ordinance pertaining to the same.
Councilmen, this item is located, uh, south side of Swancock Road and west of Rabbit Lane. Petitioner seeks to zone, rezon the property from Residence Two and Residence Two B District to Plan Development Housing District, um, transition to a, uh, point of intervention. So just bear with me as we go, uh, through this overall development. So, uh, this is a presentation before you for Green Bar Preserve South, Plan Development Housing District, um, land use intensity of forty-five and fifty-six. Uh, the overall property is, will be called Green Bar South, and it's a portion of overall development of our both corridor, Green Bar, um, north and south in the Swancock area. So, uh, one section will be determined from Maple Grove and the other as, uh, Heritage Park. So, uh, this property was annexed and zoned Residence Two and Residence Two B District, uh, and, um, just north, north side of Green Bar, you will also see a, a single-family residential development, uh, at its own Residence One, One A, One B, R two, and R two A. So, keeping in contact that with this development, there's additional seven hundred and fifty-seven single-family lots that are proposed on the north side of the street that are not a part of the PUD that is being, um, proposed before you. But keep in mind that there's a larger scale development in consideration of approximately twelve hundred homes that will happen over the next ten to fifteen years, uh, but this helps to diversify the housing opportunities within that area through the zoning mechanisms that we have, and this is, uh, part for you by the petitioner. So, uh, this is the proposed concept plan, um, before you this evening, to rezon from Residence Two and Residence Two B to the Plan Housing Development. To give you some understanding that on the northern side of the street, there are approximately three, uh, common areas that will have for signage and also for drainage facilities that are essentially approximately a hundred feet more, a hundred feet, linear feet from the first proposed lot. Through a plan development process, you have to maintain the adjacent property, um, zoning district and the lots that are keeping with those properties. Uh, on this northern side, that would not be the case, as we cross a roadway and have common areas that are more than a hundred feet and mean our regulations. Uh, but in this development, we'll also have some proposals of some single-family lots. Again, I just want to reiterate that, uh, there are two access points, two entry points off of Swancock, to the west, uh, Maple Grove and to the east Heritage Park. A top point that would happen to West Lake subdivision that is further to the south through the proposed Middle Grove Drive, and a top point in the south as well to Icing Pole subdivision through Icing Pole Road, which is a proposed, uh, development you're moving for currently. This is some iterations of the Maple Grove community that is being proposed, uh, single-family residential development, one and two-story, uh, properties. And then this is Heritage Park, uh, the single-family residential, which would also propose for some single-story and two-story product as well. What I do want to point out is that this, uh, proposed development is, will have streets of a fifty-foot right away, uh, thirty-foot pay, two-foot curb and weather, four-foot sidewalk both sides along internal streets and five-foot long Swancock Road. This is all even with our, uh, subdivision regulations, uh, as proposed by the developer. The housing type is a single-story and two-story detached dwellings. One, um, particular unit would be approximately one thousand seven hundred and ten square feet, and the maximum lot or structure to be constructed is a two-story total with two thousand seven hundred eighty-four square feet. There would be signage, one monument sign for each of the entries, and two stone columns on the Maple Grove entrance, uh, carriage lamps, uh, on which is, uh, the side of the entry, and rail, uh, four rails, horse fencing, and also the Lexington ID to, uh, to the depiction will be proposed in the development again. Phase one would consist of approximately two main entries with eighty-six lots, four common areas, and two detention lots. So, just to get you some understanding, this is a proposal of approximately four hundred and sing, four hundred and one single-family homes. Uh, you can see the different colors depicted. Uh you can see the different colors depicted in uh before you right now. The housing styles are carriage, carriage cul-de-sac, courtyard, courtyard cul-de-sac and courtyard adjoining R two and our adjoining Residence One B. If you pay attention to the colors that are in blue to the far right of the computer of the uh the depiction, what you see is that all of those uh properties are abutting and existing to West Lake subdivision. By regulations, those have to meet the standards and policies established by the R two zoning district, which therefore they abut. And if you look to the very south, you'll see some uh properties that are kind of in a light orange color or peach. Uh those are all of the courtyard adjoining properties to Residence One B District. They also have to be in keeping with the Residence One B District as they are abutting an existing proposed subdivision that also has uh Residence One B zoning as a proposal. So to get down to the nitty-gritty in this uh proposal, these are the the uh deviations that are proposed formally developed that are not uh traditional to our zoning regulations. Um the first ones are for the proposed carriage uh homes. Uh and the proposed lot would be a forty-foot lot. For the R two zoning district, you are allowed to have a fifty-foot lot where that in this case, they were proposed that the lot would be a four cap- forty-foot frontage. Uh the primary setback would be twenty-five feet, but the required would be twenty feet. The proposed side yard uh setback will be five feet, whereas the existing side yards will be five feet for one story and for two stories, it would be a six foot with a sum of fourteen. So at any point, the sum of setbacks have to be fourteen. In this case, the max setback on either side would be ten between any particular property or any particular structure. Uh the rear yard would be a setback of fifteen and you can kind of go through the additional carriage cul-de-sac is the same over forty foot to twenty-five. You see what we highlighted, the uh particular areas that are changing and the depiction before. As you can see, as you get to the courtyard adjoining R two to the fur- uh to the south, everything else is in keeping with the proposed uh zoning as it is because they have to meet the rules of the regulations established by uh the adjacent zoning property. So uh the properties in question would be a minimum size of four thousand four hundred square feet, except for where they have to meet the minimal required lots of six thousand seven thousand five hundred square feet of the proposal. The primary two changes are in the proposed of four thousand four hundred square feet, the front yard setbacks and then the proposed side yard setbacks and also the proposed rear yard, where most of the rear yards are required to be twenty-five. But you see that they kind of gave given up additional front yard setback to move the home back further because it is a front loaded uh garage part of and having a smaller uh rear yard. Additionally to that, the second front yard setback in a traditional R two zoning district, uh the minimum setback is twenty feet. In every other applicable zoning district, there's a on corner lots, there is a proposal where that you can have a reduction of ten feet to the so- uh to the secondary front yard or without it being a minimum of twenty feet. So in a R two district, you have to maintain twenty feet around the side yard uh of a corner lot in itself or secondary front. This proposal is therefore coming up with a proposal to deviate from that and change to a ten-foot uh side yard on corner lots or a ten-foot side yard or for secondary front yards. These are our findings uh to review this process. There are five particular areas. I've kind of jumped into them very partic- uh very quickly. As to the suitability of the tract for the general side of PD zoning proposed, this prepares the rest of the land in relation to other proposed developments in surrounding areas and existing and probable future development. Surrounded by properties principally for residential use. So if you look at this overall area, it is completely residential in keeping and will see continuous growth of the other residential on the northern side with some other developments that are happening. Uh but again, with this proposal, the permitted uses under R two and R two B, in R two, you are allowed to have single-family detached two-family dwellings, zero-lot line dwellings and also single-family attached dwellings, commonly referred to as townhomes. And at R two B, you also get all of those same uses with the addition of office hotels, motels, tourist homes, room housing, boarding and multi-family up to three stories, which could generate approximately twenty units per acre by our calculations. So uh with the southwest southwest sub area of the city, this is kind of in keeping with the big picture comprehensive plan and seeing that our residential growth and our name's growth corridor for employment and other opportunities, uh we see this before you this proposed uh PD uh to be suitable. Uh additionally to our finding as it relates to uh access for major and collective roads and community uh facilities and other facilities and services, uh we have access off of Swamp Cop, which is classified as a minor collective road in the twenty seventeen major street plan. Uh conducted traffic impact study reports no significant increases in traffic delays and traffic impacts inadequate with uh whole road improvements and installation of traffic management equipment. Uh connecting to local streets will improve accessibility for emergency and legislative services, will not create and uh not create any unnecessary hardship with the PD district or surrounding residential areas. And uh part of the overall Green Bar Preserve development, there's a thirty-eight acre park with a pond, uh sidewalks, clubhouse, business pool located next to and is also located next to the Wheeler National Wildlife Refuge, which would include some additional walking trails, sidewalks, said. Um parking facilities will also will happen in this development and open access to nature preserve trails along boundaries. The development team is also looking at dedicating uh some land for uh connectivity for uh expanded greenways in the area also. Additional findings are to uh relations and access from uh major and collective roads and utilities and other facilities proposed PDH will have supportive and efficient access of traffic facilities and services. So our fifty-foot wide uh streets will be uh in keeping with every other development or residential development that we have for our city. Additionally to that, uh it has full connectivity to other neighborhoods, so there are most of those roads that just uh terminate at the end and uh these connectivities will allow for allow for communities to also connect to one another over long term. As it relates to uh appointments of evidence and unified control and suitability of any proposed agreements, contract, duty restrictions, uh security, dedications, contributions, um guarantees and other instruments or the need for such instruments or amendments in these proposals, these are all of the control mechanisms that will be in place. A duly executed owner's report has been submitted, which includes evidence of unified control under the ownership of Green Bar Preserve LLC, the current owner, and necessary education and security will also be required during the subdivision process. Maintenance agreements and access agreements will be secured and traffic maintenance will also be provided to staff on the completion of the first phase of the lots as well. When it comes to the findings, these are uh just to show you that we are in keeping with the land use intensity. Uh as the residential floor area ratios per per each district and its land si- land use intensity and its maximum versus provided, you can see that we are uh in keeping with most of all of those things or if not providing more uh to those particular actions, uh all-street parking, recreational space and livability space. As suitability for plans proposed, the site plan, there are two principal uh given the access points off Swamp Cop Road and fifty-foot side uh internal streets, four-foot wide sidewalks on east side of the proposed neighborhood streets, five-foot wide sidewalks of Swamp Cop. Plans provide adequate corner visibility, uh consistent use adjacent to single-family residential districts. Door fences, walls or vegetative uh screens shall be provided at edges of the PDH districts, which were needed to protect residents. Uh proposed side structures in the PDH manage are our less named department, which is two-story in R two and um R and R two, two and a half stories in Residence One B. So they are in keeping to stay below in R two district uh or two-story of ice. And lastly, the proposed one monument sign on each of the two entrances um off Swamp Cop Road shall meet the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, the findings again, the fifty-foot wide side public driveway, sixteen-foot private driveways and parking paths, two-car garage, four-foot sidewalks. Uh this is a proposal for four hundred and one units that will uh provide standard private driveways that with uh channel traffic convenience. Safety, groves and sidewalks would be adequate for pedestrians, cyclists and used by emergency or service vehicles. Motor vehicle riders, cyclists and pedestrians shall have adequate visibility to the roads. The plans uh for the proposed PDH are suitable and the proposed modifications are appropriate. Additionally, as desirability and specific modifications in general application, regulations are um officially adopted plans that stop when the particular case, based on determination that such modifications are necessary or justify the particular case. Modifications being considered, although to density control of the non-perpetual lots and the secondary front yard setbacks. Existing R two zoning district allows for approximately uh one thousand possible single-family attached home units. Again, this is a possibility of the current R two zoning allowing for one thousand single-family attached products, because that is what it would be allowed by right. This proposal is for four hundred and one single-family lots. Existing the R two zoning district allows for multi-family dwellings and by our calculation show that that section in itself proposed approximately six hundred and sixty possible uh multi-family units in that area. The density of the government that would otherwise be allowed with the R two and R two B zoning district classifications is less op- compatible with the development of the area, which is all single-family residential uses. Additional front yard setbacks of five feet under the PDH will have a corresponding limit on the density reduction, thereby offsetting the ten-foot reduction in the secondary front yard setback. Modifications of the non-permitted law density control and the secondary front yard setback will be uh desirable as justified in the proposed PDH. And then I'll show you some additional renderings of the styles, the um floor plans of objects and the lot patterns and configurations of those particular lots.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
I noticed that in the picture here that you can uh you could see that this is proposed building on farm. Once again, that's uh not very cross-sided, but yeah. We have even laying farm for settling habit and after all the prices of something to keep it in farming, but anyway. I want to say that when you looked at that in the planning commission meeting, you couldn't see what was there already. Their just like has a solid color on top of the of the landscape. So I couldn't tell when I was looking at this in planning vision, what was there. This makes me think that maybe one of the things that we always want to try to talk about when we talk about building something that we're changing is why don't we say, I mean, there's people's lawn and lawn and lawn, how it's going to be there? And never talk about what is there, what we're losing, letting people know that we're making these kinds of decisions about changing things like that. Um I think that's a valuable piece of information that we never hear in any of this discussion. What was there? What are we getting rid of? So I hear a lot of talk here about sidewalks and all kinds of one of those stuff is, oh, can I sit down here? Is it gonna help there? How are we getting from there to our great downtown Huntsville where we can rent a scooter or something, right? How are we gonna keep people from running so fast schools in from suburbia to work, to the library, to downtown? This is a big issue. Lots of fieldwork needs has got to come to an end, okay, to very busy. And it doesn't appear to me like the powers that be in Huntsville are the least affected concern about the changing world that we live in. Day before yesterday was the hottest day on this planet since records have been kept. That's not a random post-ation, there's something going on there. So also, we've got a lot of story here about this because it's a planned development. It's not following one of the, you know, given this is the zoning, this is how it's done. We had a lot of that before about that development on um Mossam. And then we had a lot of pictures and renderings and beautiful things that have trees over those lots. And the first thing that happened is they straightened down to the ground up there. And a lot of people are very upset about that. That's not what we were sold in all of this this talk at all. I hear that it's zoned for boarding houses and more density, but none of the pictures that were shown were like they were all city-friendly ones. Where are they in those density blocks? And if they if we're trying for density, which, okay, how are we gonna get those people where they need to go? Is that what we're trying to develop there? This is all I can use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. Oh, sorry, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I'm just continuing on with uh Better Clock Walter. Eleven oh six in July. Um I'm a resident of the city since I was born except for college, but mainly in some places, I've always lived in the city and there's uh to do with this agenda and just the continued development. Um this area in particular, uh Wheeler Wildlife Refuge is nearby. And we go paddle paddle our kayaks out there and people go fishing. It's a wonderful area and I'm I'm very much concerned about um want to hear more about the impact that it's gonna be from construction, what it's gonna do to the quality of the water, what it's gonna do to the wildlife and just continue to receive the trees and everything pat down. But this particular area, when I heard about Wheeler, um I had a lot of concern that they just keep encroaching on that area. And I know it's um a lot of people's probably swamp land, but a lot of this is a treasured recreational area and I just don't know how it works. And I I plan to find out more for in the future, but I would just like to know before completing this whole story that um we take into consideration, um because that's a national of refuge. And I just wanted to see, I just want to see everything in story. I'm I'm not against the battle and I just control to the point where nature and he was can live together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Monique. Um I just want to add myself.
Need your address and city too.
Oh, sorry. Twenty-two, twenty-three, Akron Drive, Huntsville, Alabama.
Your last name.
Monique Arquiza.
Right, thank you.
And it's not a business. I want to know if you can add me to the list for the end comments.
There's a spot out front.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? To the title. Public hearing is now closed. Motion to approve. Motion of our cross to second, Mr. Meredith. Councilman, do you have any questions?
I have lots of questions. I have a lot of material to tell the town. Thank you. Thank you for that. It's super impressive. Uh so the land use intensity district, um tell us just a little bit of L U I just in a nutshell. What are the cities?
So the land use intensity uh districts are proposed for the planned development process and based off the current zoning, there are particular ratios that have to be used to ensure that the intensity is not more more invasive than what was proposed from the initial proposed zoning district. So based off of a R two district, you get forty-five and based off a R two B district, you get fifty-six. So this is established for our zoning ordinance and speaks to certain aspects of open space, recreational, uh finished floor areas of the residential and how much property shall be developed and keeping. So this gives that control in the overall development and that establishes what what someone can request in the PD process.
So this is actually an R two controlled development because I think you said it's certain sixty-six uh local and the limits.
So that would be correct. In the R two B section, it's on through our calculations, about twenty, twenty to twenty-five percent will be dedicated to imperious colors and the additional property. twenty-five percent will be dedicated to imperious colors and the additional property that we develop. We generate that about twenty units can be developed per acre and the R two B we proposed that it could, or calculated that could reduce approximately six hundred and sixty single fam- or multi-family units. Now, that same zoning dis- that same zoning district can allow for single-family or R two, R two B, when we go with the most, uh, uh, development, instant development to understand what the development of the property possibly have.
So you could still have density there, but it would be four hundred and one units as opposed to six hundred and sixty.
So that's multi-family versus single-family. If we did strictly just single-family, you could do anywhere from approximately one thousand single-family attached units or lots to sixteen hundred single-family attached lots. But if you just did single-family in itself, you could probably reduce anywhere from five hundred to six hundred single-family lots, uh, in this development.
But it, it still lets you create some density.
That's correct.
Is that density theoretically should lead to more affordable housing?
That would be correct.
Is that one advantage that we see?
That is an advantage. And it is an advantage in this, in this process because this southern side and the northern side are one and the same. Uh, the development team is working on both sides of the road. Uh, the amenities that are coming to play with this, uh, Green Bar Preserved South also has the amenity packages that are part of the northern side. If you look at the northern side itself, and unfortunately, my depiction doesn't show it, uh, it would show that there are approximately forty-five estate lots that are more than fifteen thousand square feet. There are, um, two hundred plus single-family lots that are, uh, eleven hundred or twelve hundred square feet. So they are larger homes. And what happens is that from an economic standpoint, the property or the value of the lots are spread across to create some more affordable housing opportunities through this process of the P D creating a smaller lot that produces a different product, but also creates a, um, homogeneous activity of different diversification of housing opportunities in one community in itself.
It also would appear that in addition to being able to control growth and create more affordable housing, which we all know you really need, um, it's also, if I'm looking at the map correctly, this, this is called Green Bar. So I know it's close to all the, those, uh, Monster Toyota, Amazon, Lars, all of that's right out there on Green Bar Road. So it's actually, your, people will be able to drive shorter distances to get to work than they would if they were living in, in the main part, culture downtown, having to drive there. So you're, you're reducing, um, travel time because it's supposed to make them more accessible.
That's a great assessment, Dr. Ross.
Now, the, the, the problem I do have, it was raised and I question that, it's not a question I have, is, is close to here. And we're putting a lot of folks there. So what are we doing to check?
Absolutely. So in Wheeler, we cannot go on those federal reserve properties of the Willa National Lot. So it will remain in its natural state. Uh, adjacent to this on the northern side is a fifty-foot dedication of additional walking trails that will happen in this pro- uh, process of the development. Uh, these are all private land, so at no point is the Willa Wildlife being, uh, in, in, in vague danger. Uh, there is a thirty-eight acre park that's being produced on the northern side. Most of it will be for ponds and new recreational activities of that community. Uh, some will happen on the southern side of the street, which will be smaller parks for the community as well. Uh, but again, this was all farmland, mostly used for corn, soybean and cotton. Those are products that unfortunately, sometimes we just don't consume, but those products are sold for other aspects of, uh, farming as well. But we also know how difficult it has been for farmers to continue to produce the products that they have over the timeframe. So some of these entities are seeking to get out of the business, unfortunately, in the aspect of land development for another entity to produce housing, uh, for our growth corridor of employment and our own use as well.
So you, so we, we will make sure that, that we are not impacting, we don't want a live refuge adversely, but we're also going to be maybe increasing access to, or giving them a bit of access to that.
Well, we, we're, there will be some points where we're in discussion to how we expand access to Wheeler in itself. However, these trails will be private trails that then will possibly be dedicated to the city for maintenance over the long term, uh, but will be adjacent to the, uh, for the purpose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. Good night. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nunes. On the paper, say hi.
Hi.
Say, may I? We have no public hearings to sit. This brings us to communications for the public for agenda-related items only. This portion of the meeting observed persons wishing to address the council on matters related to the specific content of items on the meeting agenda. You may sign up to speak on the other comments roster prior to meetings. When called, approach the microphone, state your name, home address, and city of residence. Each speaker may address the council for three minutes. Speaker shall refrain from entering into a dialogue with council members or staff. Never make comments regarding the good name and character of any individual. And we will begin with Stephanie.
Malone.
I'm Malone, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I'm Stephanie Malone, the director of Girls Incorporated. I have been the director for twenty-five years and it's mine. The chat, I want to speak.
Give us your address and city residence.
Forty-six hundred Blue Springs Road, uh, for chat, so I'm talking on here. Uh, I wanted to make a few comments about I am twenty J, uh, back at the Shallow Center. It has been the home for Girls Incorporated for days and we would like to remain a lifelong or as long as we can partner at the Shallow Center. Uh, we're excited about the possibility of a new design or a greater facility that is certainly welcome and appreciated. Um, our program has grown and so every year, uh, especially with our summer camp, we have to turn roads away because we don't have the space and we recently had to, uh, turn roads away for our after-school program because we're at capacity. Now, I know Kent Ballard is here and he and his team and among the people that have been, um, leaders of that facility, support Kenny and Dr. They have been very gracious and accommodating to Girls Incorporated as we still out behind the last double doors, uh, at the facility. So we thank you for that. But we do, um, we would like to be consider, um, to have input on the new design and what our needs would be in terms of plastic space or even a multi-purpose room space. Um, again, you know, if we need to use facilities and rooms outside of what's designated or already, the team is in ways to do that, to do so. We have had instances where we need the space at the same time. Uh, and so again, Kent and his team has worked, uh, to accommodate us. I would just want to make sure that we are also kept in the rest of timelines as things might change, especially if we're going to be displaced at any time. Um, you know, if support for us is remaining possible to where our girls are and where the residents live, and if that's going to have any kind of disruption to our services, then we would have just, um, the opportunity to be told, you know, so that we can make adequate preparations and the city can assist us in buying a temporary home if that should be the case, um, as well. Uh, and then finally, I would just want to say, in thinking about the design, I know right now we have the transit system that is there. We have made friends with the transit drivers and they have been very, again, accommodating to us as our parents that have come to pick up our kids or whatnot. My only concern with the location we're in is that it's so close to where the kids enter into the building and go to the playground. And so as you're thinking about, you know, what the new facility would look like, just taking into consideration about if they're gonna stay there, if we place them alone and that's not so close to the kids. We like it because we have girls that come to our program and actually like the public system. And so, you know, that is definitely a benefit for, a benefit for us as well too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. That was almost exactly three minutes. We now move to communications from the council. First, Mr. Merritt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all the good folks out at the Stone Ridge Villas for participating in my most recent meeting town hall. These events are specifically designed as opportunities for the seniors in the district to discuss issues that disproportionately affect their communities. These events are also generally held in, in the late morning or early afternoon to better accommodate, uh, those citizens' schedules. Next, I am pleased to announce that we are set to cut the ribbon on Huntsville's newest fire station, Inju Twenty, at two P M. on Thursday next week, August the first. Inju Twenty is located at one-three-one-seven-five Burgreen Road. This new station will mean not only increased fire protection, but in some cases it will mean money in the pockets of residents as their insurance premiums fall due to proximity to the station. And it will bring quicker responses to requests for emergency medical services, just to name but two benefits that will raise the quality of life for those living in the westernmost portions of our city, including those who reside in Limestone County. So please come out and support, show your support for Huntsville Fire and Rescue and all that they do to make Huntsville such a wonderful place to call. Finally, my next town hall will be on Tuesday, August the sixth, at six P M. at the Wall Highway Baptist Church located at six-five-nine-seven Wall Trianna Highway. The meeting will indeed be special as my guest will be Huntsville City Schools School Board Member for District Five, Carlos Matthews. This joint town hall will be an opportunity for all District Five residents to hear about the status of District Five schools for the upcoming year and beyond. I encourage all parents and guardians of school-aged children that call District Five home to attend this event. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Dr. Ross.
We know there's a lot of interest in City Hall, um, and I had the opportunity to take, um, a couple of people here and there through if they visited. But I recently had the opportunity, when I spoke at Magnolia Trace and, and talked about City Hall, there was a request that we offer a tour to some of the interested Magnolia Trace residents. Well, that turned out that there was so much, um, folks interest that we actually scheduled two tours back-to-back last week. They have a big bus, so we got twenty-five people on each tour. Um, we had folks who were everybody. We had folks walking with canes. We had folks on walkers. We had folks in wheelchairs and helped them all through the building and took them on, on a tour and they were all very impressed and loved what they saw here. What I was impressed with was one of those folks who was walking on the zone and walked up those stairs. You could see that beautiful blue crystal sculpture that has if you walk on the first floor, second floor. He walked all the way up to the top. He walked all the way through the tour and then introduced himself to me. It was Ed Cobb, a former C E O of Huntsville Utilities, who had just celebrated his hundredth birthday. So happy belated birthday to Mr. Cobb and I want to be just like you when I turn a hundred years old. I also, this, we had a meeting with neighborhood leaders, uh, leaders of city associations, neighborhood associations, community watch. This is our second time to do this and it has been a great way to develop communication with, with the neighborhoods and find out what kind of issues are concerned. We talked about the grass cutting ordinance and had a number of recommendations about changes that could be made, or just clarification on how the grass cutting ordinance work. We talked about short-term rentals and, and how, uh, neighborhoods can work with the city to provide us addresses of where they think short-term rentals might be inappropriate to locate. We talked about nuisance properties, Mr. Keith, our favorite, our favorite subject. We talked about nuisance houses, um, abandoned properties, vacant properties. One of the interesting things that a number of the neighborhood leaders brought up are what they're, they call contractor houses, where, um, contractors will house workers and their trucks. And, um, so we, we need to take a look at that. Um, and they were very complimentary as well in zoning enforcement and community development, working with neighborhoods on these, um, on these properties. One of the neighborhood leaders of the meeting said this could be the best thing we've ever attended and it was simply sharing information, uh, both ways. And that, that's a thing that made it successful. But it reminded me also how important neighborhood associations are. Our, we have eighty percent of the houses in South Huntsville were built before nineteen-eight and we have a lot of aging neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods that tend to maintain property values and maintain the quality and character of the neighborhoods the best are those that have active neighborhood associations, Chappy Neighborhood being probably the prime example. So many thanks to everybody across the city who participates in neighborhood associations. And then, Mr. Merritt and I must be on the same wavelength. Uh, back-to-school theme is also going to be featured at my town hall, uh, on August fifth at six-thirty at the Santa Moon Center in Van Room. We're going to have Huntsville City School Superintendent, Dr. Clam Stutton, coming. And he's going to be talking about his vision for the school system as a whole. And then, uh, I've asked him to also drill down and talk about schools in South Huntsville and, um, and, and the progress that they were seeing there and the work that's being done by our, our teachers, our parents and students and, uh, and administrators. And we are grateful for them and, and wish everyone a great back-to-school next week.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. And Mr. Clam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I regret, I need to start off my comments by, uh, I guess observing and, uh, recording the, for the record, uh, the passing of Reverend Dr. Jimmy Jackson. Uh, he was a long-term leader of the Westford Baptist Church Community and was the pastor of the church. He was a friend and he was a stalwart advocate for, uh, that whole section of the community. And I think all council members would join me in, uh, limiting about the loss of Dr. Jackson, who, uh, was really just a wonderful citizen for the community and he would be greatly missed. I did have the chance, uh, earlier this week to visit with former city council member Chuck Saunders. Chuck was a former multi-internal city council member and he also had the distinction of being the first and only person who had served both as chairman of the city planning commission and also being president of the Huntsville City Council. Uh, had a chance to visit with Chuck and his wife Barbara and it was good seeing him and we wish him and Barbara the very best. I want to thank the folks who came up to my town meeting that I had. Uh, it was a good session and, uh, the most important issue I think that came out of it had to do with the, uh, seriousness of the problems that are taking place in Mayfair Towers. And, uh, both, uh, myself as well as the residents have made contact with, uh, Eric Stinson and also with, uh, Mr. Irwin from, uh, Community Development. And, uh, I think, uh, action is being taken. But again, in this type of weather, the fact that there's a problem with electricity and elevators not working, especially your wheelchair bound and you're on a higher floor, uh, the, laundry room not having the equipment that works, uh, air conditioning unit's not working, uh, leaks taking place, lack of, uh, pest control, these are things that are just unconscionable. And, uh, again, since Mayfair does receive federal funding through HUD, uh, hopefully that will help kick in, uh, extra enforcement, uh, you know, from that agency. Our seniors certainly deserve the very best regardless of where they are living here in the city of Huntsville or if they're, you know, uh, development or really at home. And we want all our citizens and senior citizens to be treated with the greatest of respect. And, uh, I will continue to voice my concern about that situation taking place and, uh, I think action is being taken, you know, uh, to improve the situation. I want to, uh, thank, uh, our office staff as well as Kathy Martin, uh, for providing information, uh, to residents of Feathers Drive east of, uh, California Street. Council members may recall that we had passed the, uh, road lighting project, uh, recently and, uh, residents are gonna be impacted, certainly have a lot of questions. And Kathy has been very forthcoming in providing requested information to the residents and I appreciate the good work that she has done. During the, uh, last several days, uh, I've been doing my, uh, talking around neighborhoods and I think, uh, we had great hearers throughout the city and that I can help improve it, uh, you know, a learning department about small deficiencies here and there. Uh, I feel like, uh, I'm learning my keep up here on the, on the council. But, uh, during the last several days, uh, But during the last several days, last week, I covered Lower Piedmont, West Lawn, Mayfair, College Hill, Sherwood Park, Madison Heights, and again, our department heads have done a great job handling issues that have called in. I T S, Public Works, Recreational Services, Community Development are among those who have done great as far as responding and doing what we can do to help our neighborhoods in the central part of the city just a little bit nicer and a source of pride. During the last several meetings, we've had people up there who've been expressing their issue, I mean, their concerns and giving their opinion on issues, and we may not always show it, but you've got six or seven officials up here, we listen to you when you speak when we can, try to respond and help find solutions of their problems, but a lot of what we do is up here is listening, as, you know, was mentioned with one of the public areas that we had earlier. We've heard from speakers expressing their concerns about both sides of the Israeli-Pakistan war and what's going on. Some people have said, why don't you pass a resolution? I'll put that to other council members if they feel their support for doing that. My personal opinion is, and this is just me, it's horrendous what's going on out there. The intensity of damage going on to the citizens, especially in Gaza, is awful. From the other side of the forum, it needs to be brought out that this whole conflict probably would not have started had it not been for the October sixth attack that resulted in murders and hostages being taken. I don't think anybody in those countries is going to be listening to what Phil Clane says, but if they did, I would say that if I could do anything about it, I would agree, I think, with the bottom line is that I've seen on some of these sample resolutions. This war should be ended A S A P. All prisoners and hostages on both sides should be returned. Humanity crisis that's going on that's affecting both countries is horrendous. I just can't, you know, I can really understand it myself, but again, I wouldn't support anything. I agree that the war is awful and it needs to be ended immediately. Other comments related to that that were brought up, no citizen of any nationality, regardless, should be subject to any discrimination or harassment in the city of Huntsville. All people should be treated with respect, and I think Huntsville is an inclusive city. We do a lot of great things, and I certainly support the efforts that are taking place by our city officials to ensure that we are a fully inclusive city. Mr. President, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clane and Mr. Keith.
Thank you so much. Whatever's worked for you, man, just play hard in this and take, thank you for your comments, I completely encourage. I want to say thank you, Scott, we can get to that publicist conversation, but a six-month burnt-down building on Kenwood, you removed it, the citizens who came to my town hall, that's all they cared about, and I definitely think, as we said in the fall, we're going to have to take up a work session and have a discussion about these publicist buildings. So thank you so much for your words, man, as always. And after my town hall, it would not have fallen off without, Zach, I want to say thank you so much for the staff, and curve, and all the other council members, can't do what we do without y'all, and even everybody here, I said at the town hall, to Ms. Metalil who is here. Though it might not be that we show our appreciation, we know what it's like to make time to come down here, to find parking, sit here, listen to us, ramble on for hours, I promise you, I'll speak for the other five, we are so thankful for having you. You have put this change our minds, educated us, informed us, and made us resilient and resilient every day. So we need, we need to do a better job of saying thank you to you. I know at my town hall, I said it to everybody there, we really, really would not be here without the input. I want to say thank you again, and to stay, to say, Ken, I'll do this here for the work that you do at the Shout Center, most used center, all of Huntsville. The reason I know how to swim and I know how to make a layup, it goes back that far, I'm so old, but I just want to say my community thanks you for the work that you do, the blessing that you walk to my community, as well as Miss Steph. Thank you so much for being here, we are blessed to have you in our community. And then finally, I don't know if y'all heard, I know you all know, most of you agree, District One is the best place to be in Huntsville. So because of that, we were having another groundbreaking. Last week, we, oh, not this week, we had a groundbreaking circles in the dirt. We recognized Skate Huntsville for, you know, almost three million dollar renovation, the stone park that starts the first phase of renovations. Enough can't be said for Ricky Lucas and John Hamilton, Skate Huntsville, James Johnson and David Liston. This was the blessing of being a city councilman, we have two big years one office, my government says, all I had to do was listen and say yes, and I did many labor, they took care of it. So everybody, you have one year from yesterday to make sure that you are a skate, because we will be having a river cutting this time next year for the largest, nicest, most beautiful skate drink in all Alabama. And again, I'm so thankful to be a part of it, and I'm so thankful that it's in District One. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. I'll be brief, the co-area Citizens Action Group held a meeting last week, unfortunately I should not have attended over the conflict, but Dennis Madison, Kathy Martin, and Sarah Powell, our county council office were there to field questions and concern, brought me back a nice list of things to work on, and I just wanted to give them a shout out for helping, helping out in my absence. That's all I have. Resident fourteen A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment.
A move for authorization and approval of expenditures in twenty-seven to twenty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-six.
Second by Mr. Meredith, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion, here is our process.
Yes, so the report from the Finance Committee, our next council meeting on August eighth, Ms. Smith, the Finance Director, is going to report with an initial update, and that's a beautiful one there. Also, we also discussed, the staff is in the middle of preparing for the budget, the approval of budget, and so we want council members to make sure they are aware the following day, September twelfth, the budget will be introduced. September nineteenth, we want a work session, and September twenty-sixth will be the final approval of the budget. September twelfth is introduction of the budget, September nineteenth is the work session, September twenty-sixth is the vote.
Are we going to be having any type of work sessions then, or will we have to pass, you know, give a council member input of, uh?
Okay, yes, actually, and that was not on our list, September fifth, September fifth is when we will have the input sessions. September, so we'll be in the major work session, it will be council.
Do we have four meetings in a row?
We have four meetings in a row, all Thursdays and Saturdays.
Thanks, Dr. Robinson. Fourteen days of resolution, resolution authorizing the travel for council members traveling to Tampa, Florida on November twelfth to seventeen, twenty twenty-four for the National League of Cities twenty twenty-four summit. I'm a volunteer, second by, playing off exit, opposed, say nay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could, just to play my flag, this, if council members are thinking about attending, if they can book in advance or do what I'm doing, get better registration fees and also airfare, and booking airfare can be good. I did, only on the Chamber one D C trip, and actually got round trip Huntsville to D C for two hundred and seven dollars, so I checked the flag and I.
Yes, I'm actually thinking of attending this, I heard good things about it, and I appreciate that heads up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, there wasn't a senior citizen discount for that. I'm playing, I'm playing, I'm joking, I'm joking, no materialism.
I think we can use you as a youth fair.
Play that.
Oh, my God. That's got blood in it. Okay, if we pass that, so that brings us to the board of appointments to be voted on. Fifteen A is a resolution to appoint Paul Ryan Jr. to the Huntsville Downtown Re-Development Authority Group D to the seat previously held by Chris Handback for a six-year term to expire July twenty-sixth, twenty-third.
Been for approval?
Motion by Mr. Clane, second by Mr. Meredith, any discussion? Dr. Robinson?
So I have great respect for Mr. Ryan, I'll just say that he served the seat really well on this council, and he continues to be a great leader in our town hall community in many ways. However, I, I was not aware when the nomination was made that Chris Handback is still, continues, would like to continue to serve, and that the board itself would like Mr. Handback to continue to serve. He serves as the Secretary of the Board, and so I, again, have great respect for Mr. Ryan, but I cannot vote in favor of the appointment knowing that the person who holds that seat still would like to serve, is still able to serve, and the board would like him to serve.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and I have.
I thought real carefully about this situation. First of all, Mr. Ryan did not vote with me, I went to him and recruited him just because I thought he would be a great member. He lives downtown, and I think that helps to have someone who's involved similarly in this committee, he does. Second, he knows he's a former city council member, he served as chairman of the Huntsville Utilities Electric Board, has held numerous leadership positions in both the Chamber of Commerce and industrial development for this community, former board member for Alabama Hayden University, and just if there's a way you can put together someone with, you know, not that are perfect qualifications, in this way, if we were given that, that would give some rotation in that instead of having three board members who have served twelve years in a row, six years, and then six years, we would have a little bit of rotation in that you would have four members who have served six years, but at the same time, we have a rotation by bringing in one new person on that. So I think that, his qualifications, the fact that he lives downtown, and the fact that he didn't ask to be on this, I talked about it, it was because of his qualifications, I thought he would well serve here, and that was the reason why I had had the gate nominated him here in the board here.
Thank you, Mr. Clane, Mr. Keith.
It is no right call, it's a, this guy's looking at me, and he is a great guy, always watching, for a number of us, has been impacting our careers, been impacting our community. Then I also have an individual, who I don't know personally, but I've got a number of calls about the support of Chris Handback, I'll be on the floor to you as president, but I just, there's no way I can actually vote against Albright, but there's no way I feel like I could vote not knowing, you know, Chris Handback's background, who he is, so I'm going to have to stay out of this fight, which I rarely, rarely do, and just deal it as an extension to us.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Okay, I agree with Dr. Robinson on the point she made about this, I've known Dr. or Mr. Ryan most of my life, and certainly as Mr. Clane said, is intimately qualified. I would assume we could probably find some other boards where he would be just as helpful. As we said, Mr. Handback has a leadership role already on the V R A, and wishes to continue with the momentum they have built up there. So we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Clane?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Keith?
Aye.
And the chair votes, no. Fifteen B is a resolution to reappoint Paul Matheny to the Huntsville Downtown Re-Development Authority Group D, his current seat for a six-year term to expire July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
With the proof.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Fifteen C is a resolution to reappoint Dr. Janet Jones to Huntsville Downtown Re-Development Authority Group D, his current seat for a six-year term to expire July twenty-sixth, twenty thirty. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Clane, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes. We have a number of nominations. The following nominations only will be considered at our August eighth council meeting. Sixteen A is a nomination to reappoint Steve Thorpe to the museum board of the city of Huntsville in his current seat for a six-year term, excuse me, to expire August eighth, twenty thirty. Sixteen B is a nomination to appoint Nina Smith to the museum board of the city of Huntsville to the seat previously held by Patsy Holls for a six-year term to expire on August thirteenth, twenty thirty. Sixteen C is a nomination to appoint Lyle Holls, Arboils, to the Huntsville Board of Adjustments and Appeals, to the seat previously held by Kenneth Chandler for a five-year term to expire August twenty-second, twenty twenty-nine. Sixteen D is a nomination to reappoint Kevin Moore to the New City Improvement District to his current seat for a six-year term to expire August thirteenth, twenty thirty. Sixteen E is a nomination to reappoint DeMarco McLean to the Long Brown Center Board of Control to his current seat for a four-year term to expire August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-eight. Sixteen F is a nomination to reappoint David Laire to the Huntsville Hospital Health System Emergency Medical Services L L C Advisory Board, second director, his current seat for a six-year term to expire August twenty-third, twenty thirty. Sixteen G is a nomination to reappoint Beth Zem to the Huntsville, to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, to her current seat for a five-year term to expire August twenty-second, twenty twenty-nine. Sixteen H is a nomination to reappoint Ray, excuse me, to appoint Ray Almeda Var to the Long Brown Center Board of Control to the seat previously held by Dennis Quinn Levin for a four-year term to expire August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-eight. I have one nomination to make from the floor, and that is a nomination to reappoint Chris Handback to the Huntsville Downtown Re-Development Authority Group D, his current seat for a six-year term to expire July twenty-sixth, twenty thirty.
Mr. President, I allow some making document nomination from the floor.
Yes, sir.
Information to send to the staff, the nomination to please appoint billboards of Long Brown Center, Long Brown Center Board of Control to seat previously held by Dennis Quinn Levin for a four-year term to expire, it expires on December seventh, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. We have no utility items, no legal apartment items, not bringing us unfinished items for action. Nineteen A is an ordinance declaring certain surplus, excuse me, certain equipment surplus to be sold at public auction. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Nineteen B, ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus to be sold at public auction. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Nineteen C is an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighty-nine seventy-nine compensation and salary plan ordinance. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Nineteen D, ordinance declaring certain property surplus and to be disposed of per agreement with managed asset recycling solutions. Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by the chair, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Nineteen E, ordinance to change the name of Hollow Road located between North Memorial Parkway, Highway two thirty-one fourth third one, and Meridian Street to D J Richardson Way, Honor Bishop Daniel J. Richardson, Senior Pastor of Eagles Nest Cathedral and Intermodal Church.
With the proof, the ordinance.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Meredith.
Aye.
Oh.
Can you get Mr. Minus to speak?
Oh, yes, of course.
Council members, Thomas Minus, manager of planning and services. This happens before you as a request for a street name change on Hollow Road. This is bisected by North Memorial Parkway. Previously, this section, before the construction of North Memorial Parkway, was a straight, a straight with Hollow Road connecting down to Meridian Street. This action came before planning commission, we looked at five, five votes, so there was a stalemate, so it was not recommended by planning commission. The petition is sought to continue to bring this item forward. This is approximately an eight hundred and forty-foot section of linear street. When we go through a street name change, we always look at who's impacted, what property owners are there, if there's any particular addresses that go through that process, because we're talking about bank statement, driver's license, all of the things that we need to enact our quality of life and the way we do business are adjusted through that process. But in this process, there are four properties, and either of those properties are having issues or reflective of having issues with it because they are addressed off on order program or industry. So this Hollow Road section is, could possibly change. There are other sections of our city that shows places like this, whether it be in Hazland, Johnson Road and Airport, Bogway, Sparkman. But again, this is a section of road that is being presented for the work that Dr. Bishop Daniel J. Richardson, Senior Pastor of Eagles Nest, the petition is for his church, and honoring his services. At times before. times before we get to discussion, can you take any possible way you could pull up the section, have it, or kind of in the back, so people can understand just the difference in the, in the size and scope of this street? If it takes a minute, I'm doing this intentionally.
I have, I have pulled up.
If you can't, you can't.
I have pulled up, then maybe some technical difficulties.
Yeah, no worries, no worries at all. So I just want to take, take the lead on this one and then we can get to discussion. I want to say that when we had this conversation two months ago, maybe about our importance of recognizing those individuals as they are present with us, not always for those who have passed, we made decisions on street names in places like John Park and other locations because of the petitioning of the public. And this is another example, this is not something that I brought, but I do believe in the future we'll have other names I might bring. But I want to encourage you as I will make sure that information is sent, to look at the CV and history of his thirty-five years of leadership. I think what is more important is that not only has that church been a pillar in the timeframe of North Huntsville's history and Huntsville's history, but the petitioners are the people of this community. And that is important to me when I do consider. And I do think it's very important that we take, as I said in the last couple meetings when we were over there talking about street names, it very intentionally to consider because if a person has in our past, they have a lot of life who they live and things can happen. So I think if there's ever an example where, when they'll pull up and show there's opportunity to make the name and the location by which he has made a difference corollary, it is here. So that's why I'm in support of it. Well, that's why I think a lot of my community is in support of it, and the individuals of his church are in support of it. And as I do think we should also ourselves to consider the things of renaming public spaces, public buildings, and public right of way. I do think it is very important when an opportunity arises to recognize somebody in the location of their church, in the location of their impact, there's a potential for us to do something special. So when he pulls it up, I think you'll get an understanding of why that location is here, and why I think that it works. Thank you. So just to get you some understanding again, this is a small section of Hollow Road. Hollow Road is, this section property eight hundred and forty linear feet bisected by North Memorial Parkway and Meridian Street. If you look to the west of there, Hollow Road where the Eagles Nest actual church exists, there will be, if there was a proposal to do this on the west side, it would impact a significant amount of people, planning staff and travel engineering would vividly oppose this particular action. So you wouldn't even see these types of requests commonly we get them from time to time, and they do not come forward because of the impact that it has on the community. But in this case, there's no properties that are impacted as they are addressed off of Memorial Parkway and Meridian Street. There would have been four properties affected if there was any addressing or any other action off of Hollow Road. But again, this is a small section. And similar to that, this was an action brought forward in a discussion by planning commission with the now Huntsville. And just for everybody to understand, can you put your question on Eagles Nest, one time? That's Eagles Nest right there.
So what is the building? It looks like there's new construction going on that we connect directly to that section of Hollow Road.
There is. That building is constructed and active. They have, their addressing is off of Meridian Street.
Okay.
It is just a secondary point of ingress interest. So even there is other construction happening in the area. They have access to Hollow Road, however, their primary addressing is off Memorial Parkway and Meridian Street.
So you mentioned that the planning commission was a five-vote, so this is now being appealed to us.
Well, in this case, it was not recommended.
It was not recommended, but it, but it does count.
Yes.
It is extremely rare for planning commission to have that kind of saw and interested in. Can you share what the issues were?
Absolutely. Again, there was the sections of the road being changed in the middle of the intersection, the, the impact of wanting to understand the honoring of the individual and the many other individuals in our city that also could be honored by a street name change. But this is a rare occasion. There, again, there was no definitive information to state that, hey, there were some that were opposed. They weren't necessarily opposed against Mr. Richardson. They were supposed to the process. It couldn't make a clear decision on the six or five and it voted as a five-five. If it had been six, five in, in opposition, or then we would have brought this, decided to still move forward. So to its only request, if the planning commission does not recommend the item, the council is the final deciding part. Similar to this particular act, action, the council is the final deciding part. The petitioners typically do not move actions before if they do not receive the support from the planning commission. But considering that it was a five-five vote, that does not yield to a recommendation, but yields to, similar to the action that this council just took in regards to a vote on the two-two vote, and the action does not move forward.
So, so if I understand, then the concern expressed by those members voting against it was that the road changes name, kind of like we've got California, like we like Spur.
Correct.
And it gets a little confusing. But you've got a, a really short segment with not a whole lot on it.
That's true.
Is it, so that's, but that is still a concern? It is just simply the precedent that we continue to set of changing names in the middle of the road.
That's correct. Yeah, that was the, some of the concern. Again, there are other instances throughout our city that, that does occur. You just mentioned a few. In this case, we commonly really see it where there's a major archerial that bisects, as an example, Sparkman and Bob Wallace, Wetherley and Hazelman Square, Jordan, Johnson Road and Airport, impacted by a major archerial that didn't bisects. But before the construction of Memorial Parkway, Meridian Street was the primary corridor north and south to Huntsville. But upon the construction, now you see the section bisected by the archerial in this, in this closure.
That's actually the, the Wetherley and Hazelman one is recent, and that, that's a very similar example.
Correct. The road construction that could easily remember you as continuing the word of the Wetherley Street, but in honoring of that family and the dedication to our city and the growth of our community, it was named Hazel Road. I did want to just, one time, thank you so much. I just want to give some, out of perspective, as I said, sticking to my own habit of being considered, of people that we put the names, it is very rare to be able to put the names of a street in the proximity of a person's impact. We have names and buildings that are not located where they live, not located in the place of which they made the difference. So I think also this offers preemptive opportunities for us to have a correlation between the people who have turned on this road to go to church and recognize the visual of this church and its impact on the community.
Didn't the planning commission way back when come up with the proposal to the council for what we call Leaning Ferry Road that ran from behind Governor's Drive to the Parkway, changing that to Rose Street? Wasn't that part of the plan that actually came with planning commission, not traffic engineering?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that particular action. It's had the importance of just because it was adding a name to Rose Street because of its former connectivity to downtown, but with us having other construction of new roads and it was bisected by Governor's Drive at this point, towards the point that you speak of. But there could have been a request to street name change as well in that, in that area.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Nineteen F is an ordinance annexing three point four-six acres of land lying on the north of Winchester Road and east of Bradford Lane. Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by the Chair.
Councilmember, this item is located north of Winchester Road and east of Bradford Lane. It's three point four-six acres. It is an existing church that is seeking to annex for city services.
Thank you. Do you have any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Ordinance passes.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, business. Number twenty, new business items for consideration or action. These items will be approved in one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Reading of each item will be waived unless the council member requests otherwise. Do you know, have any others to be dealt with?
Aye, absolutely.
First one?
Aye.
Uh, Jenny Gold?
S?
S is Ms. Sarah. What else? All right. All the stuff in the road here. Mr. Meredith? Um, maybe a piece? All right. So the chair moves to consolidate items twenty-eight through G, I, K through R. I second by Dr. Mr. Klein. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, S? R? Oh, I don't know that. You start from scratch.
Yeah.
All right, here we go again. Chair moves to consolidate, vote on items twenty-eight through G, I, K through, K through R. K through R. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Those are the top. That brings to twenty-H. Twenty-H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the city of Huntsville and Rocket City Federal Credit Union for space in admission building municipal justice public safety center. Motion by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Klein. Mr. Allison.
As member John Hamilton, City Administrator, what's before you is a lease agreement with the Rocket City Federal Credit Union. That's a credit union that specifically supports open employees, particularly our municipal employees. You may recall that in the old city hall, there was an ATM machine app that employed breakman that was provided by the Rocket City Federal Credit Union. This lease allows us to now get ATM machines. This new building also allows us to go over to new municipal justice where we have a senior employee. So this just provides for the ability to have ATM machines in those two locations to serve our employees.
Thank you, all. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Twenty-J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a standard agreement for architectural services in the city of Huntsville and all of our person architects. You see for the doctor, Richard Shour, Recreation Center Park. Motion by Mr. Keith, seconded by Dr. Robinson.
I want to just, to take a step back and talk about our recreational infrastructure across the city briefly, and indeed, this specifically, this kind of surplus is a good example we have been able to accomplish. So obviously, we've been making attention in the last several years, the city has been making a significant amount of investment in recreational infrastructure across the whole city. If you look at capital plan that y'all put last September that we're currently executing, it has more than five investments. And whenever you have a year, a couple months, you'll see more of the same. And, you know, when we look at that, that infrastructure, there's needs across the community where we're trying to re, recently approved cheap after, with close support, make those investments in all high districts and all corners of the city. That's exactly what we're doing. I want you to, when you look at that, notice that in some cases, this brand-new infrastructure that is specifically addressed, you know, addressing occupancies, that recently approved construction contract, Park Road Breakfast, as an example, that was, is a whole new infrastructure in part of the city that, that was not previously, not previously served by that type of facility. But it is also importantly existing facilities that need to have reinvestment. It's just renovating the, the building as it has significant issues. In some cases, it might be a need for a change of use, all kinds of things. But before you is the beginning of our solution, Shower Center, which is, is in the capital plan already, we're now ready to begin moving forward. This specific contract, you don't always see this when we take on these, like after projects, but, but each one has some uniqueness to it. The Shower Facility, the Shower Center Facility is, is a significant piece of infrastructure in North Huntsville. It has sort of a good, a meaning to its very large facility, has a lot of uses, but not necessarily common to just our typical recreation center. And that's on purpose, because it's specifically focused on eating needs that area, but also adds a lot of capacity. So as we, as we get ready to do a full architectural contract with what you're accustomed to seeing in this particular case, and there's a few others like this, we have these types of things going on, we actually bring architect and purchase to do an assessment. What is, what assesses the building itself? Where, where does that problem for the things where it specifically needs to be optimized? What are the opportunities to make changes to things? Also to engage with staff, with, with the public on understanding, are there different uses they'd like to see in that building, in the Shower Center, in particular, has a lot of capacity, producing different effects in terms of deals. So, so within the, the realm of the recreational world, that there may be new uses of things. You mentioned the groundbreaking for the, for the role of reinvest, as saying, an existing facility, this overall part, and adding a new capacity that we can see in our Huntsville based on the public. So you could just say a new recreational endeavor that they want to serve, and if we want to do assessment engagement, that was the right solution, and this council approved that. We'll look at similar process with the Shower Center of the city. Are there spaces in there that, you know, may need to be, generally, or have other things added to? And so this contract does have assessment. At the end of that assessment process, they come back with us with a very realistic report that it informs our contractual contract, the drives, what we design into the building. Now, I was gonna say building, but reality is, why should we change the whole campus? Because when we take Shower Center, we all, all think of the building, that there's actually multiple buildings, there are multiple different uses, as well as fields, athletic fields and walking paths and kinds of things. And so this assessment will address the entire campus and come back with recommendations on things that we can, or cannot do on the campus. So this is the beginning of the process. It'll, it'll go on for a little while, and obviously you'll see more on it as we, as we go forward. Anyone? Mr. Johnson, the Director of Parks and Recreation here. Obviously, he's day-to-day into the needs and uses of all those facilities, wanting to have an opportunity to see this paper project briefly.
Thank you, John. Councilmembers. James Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. What you have before you for consideration is what I consider the next step in the renaissance of the Dr. Richard Shour Recreation Center. Three years ago, we had, kind of had some leadership change there, and we really challenged the staff and the people to come in, just rather, to really, you know, kind of up our game in that community, for offering what we can do and how we can impact that community. And the staff, they're bad with it all, so much so that we have a dance now, and we have a Halloween, we have a fall festival last year with thousands of attendees. And those kind of impacts, you just, you just can't get sometimes, or even get best uses of your building, parts of that building were built in nineteen, like, in the late nineteen sixties. And so this assessment will allow us to look at space usage, you know, how we bring the public in, how we best serve, yes, from a facility standpoint, as y'all mentioned, in totality for the whole location and all eighteen acres there. And so we need to take into account, you know, what are the best uses for this whole site? Certainly us as professional recreators, we all have an opinion on it, but we, we're going to seek opinions from all parties and listen and, and then come out with, with this professional group of developers about what a plan to move forward. And we certainly appreciate your support and hope we can move forward then. Thank you.
If I could make one final point. So the question is, council committee is related to, you know, the name, and obviously it memorializes the lives and service of Dr. Shour. And I think, you know, one thing is more Republican, or City Council, that if we're going to name pieces of people in public infrastructure like you did with the road here, and this was many years ago, named Dr. Dr. Shour by the city council. In our process, when we go over to make one of our existing buildings, there's nothing on that process that even triggers a discussion on changing the name. Now, obviously, the city council could change it if they wanted to, but certainly from, from our standpoint, it, I, I would absolutely know the discussion whatsoever. The idea of doing that, I, I would have difficulty contemplating that, that idea. But for those that are concerned about that, the city, you know, renovating a building does not do cause any, any complication to changing the name. So unless, unless the majority of you are to tell me otherwise, we're going to continue calling Dr. Shour Center on it to perp to it. I'm certain if anybody's trying to.
Absolutely. One, thank you so much, James. This is huge to Mr. Shour, who was watching. I know she is in jubilation, and this has actually happened, it's been a conversation. One, uh, thank you so much, uh, James, uh, this is huge to Miss Shower who was watching, um, I know she is in jubilation, and, uh, this is actually happened in a conversation when we were at the last, uh, like I said, the whole building, uh, you know, people have brought this up to us publicly and such. And I want to give a scope of understanding, because we're doing this a different way. Once I guess you think about the library, that the reason we're taking this process as incremental and intentional as we can, is because we do want to hear from everybody, and we do want to think about the whole site. It was brought up, uh, maybe you can reference it. It's a girl thing, we want to have these partnerships, and this is a step in the way to consider the buildings, even if it's not the same building that returns, the building's usage is correct.
Absolutely, yeah, so, you know, when we do, you know, public areas or these for, uh, to kind of get people's input on different sites, we did same thing, we went through the process of determining the best uses for the, the Oliver Johnson High School campus, and there's a number of those things. We had lots of ideas from the public, um, and that was, that's, that was an example, one where, where we got ideas that were good ideas for something to deliver within the community. The Johnson campus wasn't the right place to do it, but we put that idea alive somewhere else and deliver that infrastructure in another location. Uh, so the input from the public, uh, is important to us, uh, and obviously with the staff, and, and, and a lot of the, all of these projects that we did, all the stuff that we're building is informed by day in and day out, weekend and week out input, and the staff is getting from people who come in. And so there are lots of people that use the Shower Center today, and they're routinely telling the staff the things that they might develop, I think they wish they had those type of things. So that knowledge is coming in from the staff, we're also, we're gonna have opportunities for the public to talk directly to the design team and the planners, uh, to sample what kind of factor those ideas are.
That's right, I think, uh, no, I guess they do agree that I'm taking in that perspective, as we've discussed, probably, you know, I would say it's very proper, speaking to Stephanie, and there are no closed-door meetings, they want to meet with you, discuss long-term lease, and I imagine there's good reason, they sit at a board, and you say, how many kids can we get here, what's the potential of this location, they can actually come to you, definitely come to you and such, to have that as a conversation with their board, with Stephanie and others, who I know has been a blessing to our community.
And I would say, you know, uh, during, during her comments, uh, she talked to, you know, being mindful of the impact during the construction phase that comes here in the future, and that, that is absolutely something we have to deal with in any kind of renovation, it's how we, how we manage the existing users, and that's what we have to do, we've got a number of projects on going right now, that impact, uh, you know, location's ability to function for a period of time. So the, the project manager, we require our general contractors to, to collaborate on that, to how we accommodate existing use while we fix the building.
Right, and I, I would say this will be our San Drew, a little bit bigger, a little bit better, but this game is very hot, and I imagine that so many people would be involved, but I do also want to speak to, it was stated, uh, Roger, I see our directors here as well. That is a internal conversation that we will publicly, uh, share as well, right, that review will be considered, it's not just specifically to the brick of horn, this is all of it, and, and the transportation being a lot of the credit.
Sure. Yeah, and, you know, as, I think that, you know, the comparison to the San Drew complex is, is a good one, there's differences, but also significant similarities. And, you know, most of our recreation facilities, you know, are on, sit on a campus, where the only thing that occurs there is kind of pure archer type, uh, programming, where the San Drew, the Shower Center, and there's probably a couple others where there's actually a mixture of other uses that you wouldn't think of being, you know, true core recreation type uses, uh, but there are, I mean, you know, Abbey Hills, uh, campus is a good example, where, where you gotta have both recreation and non-recreation uses that both exist and, uh, and work both.
I just want to say thank you, I know this article and all this information is gonna be shared, so, but just thank you for the process that you're going through, this is just not putting lipstick on anything, we're actually gonna take a potential steps to make this the earliest facility in Huntsville, and just so happens to be in Huntsville. And, uh, thank you, James, and good to you for this work that has just now started.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
I just quick give a shout out to our favorite professional recreator.
Yes.
Sir Mr. Boston. Um, we recently had conversations about another park in South Huntsville, and he had just like this, is, we're looking at, and, and looking at what's, what's possible, and he's been throwing out ideas that, I mean, I'm kind of stuck on, we play baseball and play soccer at parks, and, and he's looking at this very differently, so I just, I, this, what he's doing here at Shower Center, what we've done at the Moon Complex, um, and I'm, I'm thinking this is going to be a process that we're going to use at other parks, and just look at what's possible in non-soccer. So, good job, Mr. Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, all pairs say aye.
I agree.
Opposed say nay. The whole resolution passes. Twenty-S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a still use agreement between the City Council and Scott Elements of L.C., who brought a drone light show as part of the twenty-twenty-four concert in Park.
Mr. President, second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Kling, Mr. Hamilton.
As far as what's before you is, uh, is a use agreement with, uh, an entity that, uh, you may have seen some of these on TV, you have seen, it's pretty significant, light shows where they use drones, uh, in some cases, hundreds or maybe thousands of small drones that are, are flying, uh, obviously controlled by computers and lights. It's basically instead of our show, it is, we, it appears to have a agreement, they were, they were scheduled to do the light show, include the fireworks at the first concert in Park this year, unfortunately, it has technical issues that, uh, that caused them to either reschedule. So this new agreement, uh, is to do it as the kind of the final show of the year, so the, the last concert in Park for the season would have the drone show instead of our show.
Cool idea. Um, is there really a cost associated, I mean, I missed that in the paperwork, the cost is speaking?
Yeah, it is the cost, it's, you know, it's covered to our.
Just a second.
Yeah, thank you.
What's, what's the date for that?
I'll put it down later, did you?
It's obviously, yeah, obviously, it's, uh, obviously it's the, the last person on the board.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
And opposed say nay. Resolution passes. Twenty-one, new business items for introduction. Anyone has an introduction of the ordinance to change the name of Glenmore Drive to James Everett Drive? We have concluded our official portion of the meeting, and I bring us to our second roster of public comments. We have now concluded our official portion of the meeting, and I bring us to our second roster of public comments. Now we'll click through this to get delivered. Twenty-two, our second roster of public comments. This, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters relating to city business. Whether or not such item from the meeting agenda, you may sign up to speak on the section of public comments rostered prior to or during the meeting. When called, approach the microphone, state your name, home address, and city residence. Each speaker may address the council for three minutes. Speaker shall refrain from entering into a dialogue with council members or city staff, and from making comments regarding the good name and character of that individual. First up is Dr. Cukion.
Uh, thank you, it's Dr. Cukion, Washington, my address was previously provided. I came to let the council and our leadership know about the wonderful and amazing city. So on Saturday, September seventh, I'll be hosting these, you know, this is the second one that we're doing. I'm here just to bring awareness to, and to help in our city and the local resources that we have, and make it for information available to our residents that are here in the city. Last year, when we did it for the first time, we had one hundred and thirty people that came out, so we fed one hundred and thirty people, we partnered with the Veterans Administration, they brought out a bus so that they were able to provide onsite counseling services. There was a homeless veteran living in the woods that came out, shared a meal with us, and signed up to receive services. And so they're going to do this again, um, at the brand new and wonderful Johnson Legacy Center Park, I believe it's in District One, I believe. And so we wanted to make sure that we let the city know that we were doing this again. It is free, open to the public, we're going to have food for families, games, and of course, um, mental health resources to let the people know about what they can do, and just learn things, and simple ask-only mechanisms that are not always taught. And so there is anything that the council can do, whether it's sharing, it helping you, to let the citizens know about this free and busy, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, make sure that you send that flyer to our office, I'll get that sent out, that thought, that, you know, we'll get this, we'll get it sent out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, we're blessed to have you up there.
Thank you.
Next is Yvonne Serryce, that's in the right. That's what I hear. I'm sure.
Everybody, um, so you have a.
Sure.
He comes to Paris on the lane more class, and I'm a dancer. I respectfully request that our community comments, condition the signature to be documented and denied seating in the U.R. safety concerns. I will begin by reading our petition into record and ask everyone here to swear our petition to stand and be recognized. We, residents of the Alcoff student neighborhood and citizens of the City of Huntsville, petition the city to discontinue through traffic on Wordsworth Road. Our neighborhood and streets were not designed to be any of our affair. Alcoffville was designed, approved, and built as a neighborhood within the City of Huntsville, as one with many short streets and alleys encouraging a smaller, safe, and lawful community. The volume of traffic from City of Madison neighborhoods to our east, traveling through our subdivision near the single short side street of less than four hundred feet in length, Wordsworth Road, is presenting safety issues within our community. The continued development of current approval of over five hundred and fifteen homes by the City of Madison is causing unsafe and unnecessary vehicular traffic in our community, in addition to access wear and tear on our city streets. Wordsworth Road was approved at a time where it would connect to a single neighborhood for which the City of Madison was anticipating to approve development of under two hundred and fifty homes. The increased development of these City of Madison communities, such as Reapard Hills and now Barnet Crossing, to our east, is causing undue stress on our city streets, which the City of Huntsville is already spending significant funds to maintain. It appears that the City of Madison continues its development without regard for us as citizens of the City of Huntsville, as your constituents, we are asking for your representation and protection. We are hereby requesting our City of Huntsville mayor and city council to remedy this situation by ordering the installation of flat footballers, or some other method of preventing through traffic via Wordsworth Road. We have followed this, that's the end of the petition, but we have followed the process for the last eight months now, meeting first meeting with the Council of Mayor that in December of last year, the chief of department in January, we were actually notified in April that the ballers would be installed the following week, and then we found we were canceled in late June, despite maintaining Council of Mayor's full support. It's important to note that in regards to our local streets, the City of Huntsville Traffic Engineering Center would state that service to through traffic is deliberately discouraged. We expect answers, so we seek action to address our concerns, and we, we are requesting a meeting with the mayor for redress. We plead that if you seriously consider this request, if not, and if there has someone may be seriously injured, then we will find ourselves back here. As you can see, we could have many more speakers and public comments at this time, but we would like to be respectful of your time, and will forego that.
All right, thank you.
With the expectation of a redress, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Tanya Saltine. Anna?
Hello, I'm Saltine, one of five General Jackson Corp. in Madison. Um, where parents have been told that this council is not the body we need to be a family to, regardless of the extremely explicit sexual material in the kids section of our libraries, boy, do I get that. I was on an H O A work for several years, like you were talking about before, and I had a lot of instances of people coming to those with problems that we didn't have the authority to solve. At first, I thought the same thing that we keep being told, that they were wasting their time coming to our board with these problems. It's not like you can pull up one of my neighbor's jar, pull out a shotgun, and then make and hit the snake out of that, we had a lot of jar we went to. As a board, we can send those as modifying, which they didn't have to pay until they sold their house, potentially years down the road, but there really wasn't any way we could force them onto do anything, we can only encourage. But the longer I served, the more I realized that their less value than my neighbors sharing their readings is what a board and the rest of the neighborhood, that lets the people in our community know the things they're doing are hurting people. I've still learned that the members of any community have to rely on each other to do what they're supposed to do, or else the whole community suffers. Besides all the very well documented harm of sexualizing your child too early in the college, I would count particularly four communities suffer on our libraries who don't do what we rely them to do. I know what you're talking about here. I just want someone very much needed a safe place that didn't cost me money to explore at the world, so if I'm not a child, and I'm my kids, why was I being a mom? If our libraries to be in places that are unsafe, our kids to explore, something precious is being taken away from people who rely on. As far as I know, the city council is not aware of current, don't have any direct authority over library boards. This would create a situation where an unlimited group of board members can operate against the will of people they serve, with no higher authority for us to appeal to, and their will has come to the people in our community. It's also kind of a meditation that the city council is responsible for one point five hundred seven members of our library board, and the library board term is limited, so you do have some taste of about the composition of our library board. I think one of the reasons this room is overflowing with concerned parents is that most of the parents are not, and aren't aware of the things that are currently within our children's reach. One of the reasons it can be valuable if air grievances in front of government bodies such as this council, is to make people aware of what's going on, and let our neighbors know that what they're doing is also hurting people, particularly children. Because like that H O A board I started from, I know you can't force anyone to do anything, but it seems reasonable to believe that you can encourage. And groups like these really keep showing up at these meetings, they seem pretty well organized, like they know what they're doing, so if they think there's good reason, keep showing up here to debate their side of this issue, it's probably worth it for me to do. So maybe keep coming here and talking to y'all, and I appreciate you indulging me. If you leave this meeting tonight and start considering some ways you can help encourage the library board, the board, this council will help appoint, to do the right thing with the children of Madison County. This parent, as well as the million other that talked about this issue, we would sure be grateful. Thank you for your.
Thank you. Next is Deborah Hotfilter.
Hi, I'm here for Dr. Hotfilter, I'm a citizen of Colorado. Um, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Um, I've recently understood that the citizens' public comments are no longer part of the broadcast, and after speaking and, and reading up several people, I also agree that they should be reinstated as part of the broadcast, so that people who can't come can still see what happened. And actually, a separate, separate subject is that, um, we continue to keep voting to build more and more buildings, keep bringing people in, uh, that's one thing, but I would just like to think two or three times before always approving those, uh, that to, let's get the infrastructure in place first, because it's continuing to make traffic worse. We understand like three mountain, like one longer line going up there right now, with all the, the, I just like to see more infrastructure, fix the roads, build the infrastructure in place up today before you just keep adding more and more people, um, and buildings to the town. And, but again, I'd like to see that you need more trees to be planted, everything's getting torn down, every time I go up that, that parkway, I just hate seeing what happens across the land for a parking lot, because it can cause outrage, and we haven't had landslides before. Um, the videoation, so I'd like to see the infrastructure brought up to date in areas of the town for those citizens who are here already before you just keep adding things. And I do love some of the new improvements, I love that new San Drew complex down there, the Madison County Service Center, uh, which places out the lines, so there aren't a lot of good things being done, it's just controlled. good things being done, just control the growth, not so fast. And get infrastructure in place first. And I hope you get better at doing this because I've a lot of conservatives and citizens who are here for most of our life. Um, I want to see the city improve and I have not been very vocal in the past and I hope that I can become where I'm at.
Next is Henry Jonas.
I'm Henry Jonas, I live on thirteen oh six Governor's Drive here in Huntsville. Tonight, I'm considering, I'm Spanish, we are aware, we received a letter from a strong group that's going to come in and they want to do an appraisal to widen Governor's Drive by our place. We received just yesterday around the continents and kind of regarding the project plans and approving them on the neighborhood, we all got together at my house, Sunday night, got together our strategy. Okay, to be very clear, I'm not going to talk tonight about the mess that is Governor's Drive. I'm not going to talk about the about the garbage that's thrown on our on our property, personal effects, very personal effects that people have. I'm not even going to talk about the noise, the jail breaking, which we know for a fact is against code, which has not been enforced, jail breaking, first off, we all are really gone down and we're going to the dead end, it's another way. The other thing that we have on top of that is the speeding. Okay, I'm not going to talk about the ridiculous speed here for forty five, police delay thirty five minutes of forty five, I think it's a city, yeah, contact the mayor's office, contact the police, and I think that's it. So it's not being managed, okay? It's not being managed. Now you want to widen where, you know, we're underneath our bedroom window? I got one day and we're just going to lose half of this property. That's not going to happen. We want to work with the city, but our question is, what is the benefit to the city? You're, plus, we think you're kicking the can down the road, you're worried about congestion in front of the hospital and donors, but if you come up, all you're doing is moving up a quarter, a quarter, less than a quarter, a half a quarter, it's all fifty, bottom foundation, it goes three lengths, you're going two ways. What is the value? What's what's going to do to the city and loss home value for that does? You know, there's a lot of things that we need to think about. We can see that, what happened was the northern blue, thirty percent, what is the thirty percent of the property that's been bought? What's happening with that? You know, that's supposed to go for the toy lower plant for the lower park with it. Uh, that that may have been purchased over time, that will help alleviate some of the traffic. By the way, the Cecil Ashburn extension has helped some of the some of the traffic. So at the end of the day, for two hours, which is from four to six, you're going to bulldoze all these places, bring this light up to our house, and it's going to be unsightly. It's just, it is, to me, there's much better way to handle it. But we will be looking at this, we do want to work with it, we do want to see the city and Huntsville grow, but the first thing is the city has got to get that straightened and they have not done it. It's a mess. I had a cop come to my house one time and two hours, I mean, there were eight people out in the city, it was such two years ago.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to ask if traffic engineering, perhaps the state department presentation could look at that, uh, middle lane and see if that could somehow be used as reversible lane, as as a tactic that's used in, um, cities up north and it could go westward in the morning and then it could go eastward in the afternoon and evenings. Just something I think with recent weeks I've been looking to and that would increase the traffic capacity but would not, uh, mean that this length extension would be needed.
Thank you, Mr. Plaim. Uh, next is Amique Urquiza.
Uh, my name is Amique Urquiza, address twenty two twenty three Agnew Drive. Um, okay. Today, I am just coming up here just to respond to the downtown Huntsville. We enjoy it, we love it, but I think I speak to citizens, for residents inside myself, that we're not, not just going to just, this is all money put into the downtown Huntsville, we enjoy it, but I think we expect more, more guns to the rest of the city. I think that's what it is. Um, you see our side, you know, wherever I live, and if you visit downtown Huntsville, which looks new, we want that around our homes as well, such as John's Valley. We want that peace that you guys feel as well on that end of town. I think that's where the residents are coming from regarding the ones that we see and move etc. You know, and we love it, we enjoy it in our family, but we also want that in our homes. We don't want to have to also drive fifteen to twenty minutes just to get some peace. We want that around our homes currently in those locations. And I mean, I I stay there, yes, um, I'm a homeowner and that's why it's a concern to me because I do not want to, we have to rent out my home or in those cases, as we talked, we had a conversation, but I'm just saying that when you brought that up, a lot of people say that all the money going to downtown, we're not raising for it. We just want the same energy you're giving to downtown and John's Valley, we want that same energy back into the other side of Huntsville. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it for the night and we are adjourned.